How they do it at sunset, it's pretty disconcerting. All right, seeing that it is indeed 7:00 PM, I will call the meeting to order. This is the September 16th, 2025, meeting of the West Newbury Planning Board. Their member Deb Hamilton is not in attendance tonight, but I'm Ann Bardine. We have Rob Phillips, Brian Murphy, and Ray Cook, who are other board members. So we have four out of five members attending, so we're fine to go ahead. As is our right to rearrange the agenda, I would like to take the item listed as number two, which is an A and R at Rogers and Garden Streets first. I think this is a pretty straightforward thing, and we often do this first. I do believe that the applicant was going to have my representative here. Is that the case, Chris? But I don't-
That's what I heard, but I don't see him.
I don't see, let me just look, the list just changed. Is either, a couple of names just appeared?
Hi, we just joined.
Here we are, oh, okay. Well, please go ahead, introduce yourself and tell us what you're here for, please.
Hi, this is Steve Hayden and my wife, Michelle. We are submitting an A and R for a lot merge to create one new building lot.
All right. Chris, do you want to share the drawing for us, please?
Yeah, sure.
As I understand it, Mr. Hayden, this was, there was a fairly large amount of land in that general vicinity, and over the years, lots have been created. And it looks like two of the previously created lots are being made back into one. Is that the general gist of it?
So the lot two, being shown right here, is family trust land. And then the parcel A would be added from my existing parents' lot to create the 200 feet of frontage, and they would be remaining in lot one.
I see, so lot one remains as it is. Parcel A and what's now been known as parcel B are being combined to create lot two.
That's correct.
Okay. Chris, you've had a chance to review this for compliance with the bylaw. What's your report?
Yeah, Madam Chair, through you to the board, everything looks pretty straightforward. And it's easy to understand what they're trying to achieve here. The plan is properly prepared under our regulations. So I would recommend that the board endorse the plan as proposed.
Okay. Mr. Hayden, did you have anything else you wanted to mention? We're going to discuss for a few minutes, but just to give you a chance.
Nope.
Okay, well-
Well, if, Ann, if I-
Yes, go ahead, yes, yeah, I want to-
As a newest, as a newest member, remind me, because it's been 30 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Does this create a new building lot, lot two?
Yes, that's the, the net effect of this. And the parcels being combined will create a lot known as lot two on this drawing. It has frontage and acreage, and the frontage is on an existing public way. Any other comments or questions from members? Ryan?
Yeah.
And Ray? Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Ray.
I'm just looking at the mind map. And I'm not sure that I, and I just looked up 15 Rogers Street. And I'm not sure that I understand how this matches the mind map, so. That's my question.
Oh, yeah, so parcel A is currently in the 15 Rogers Streets in the mind map. The lot, the parcel B would be from the 29 acres behind that. So it's a combination of two different lots.
So in fact, we're creating a new lot one, I guess. We've reduced the frontage of that lot, referred to as your parents' lot. Okay, so lot one and lot two are both new. Does that start to sync up a little better with what you're seeing, Ray?
Uh, no. But, you know, I, okay, so. Yeah, I'm saying, I'm seeing R 20-6A.
I can't read the fine print on this, I'm sorry, the size of it.
Uh, yeah, R 20-6A is my parents' lot, 15 Rogers Street, which currently on my map is parcel A and lot one.
Could I, could I just share the screen real quick? Does that work?
Yes, Chris, do you have to give him, do you need to give Ray a-
Let's see what I got here. Should be able to share.
Thank you.
I don't know, that looks like lot one plus the adjacent parcel to me.
So I. This is this big chunky parcel here, R 20-6. So we're taking some of this.
Okay, the big piece behind, yes. So the, the additional, the, the bottom leg of the L, if you will, as I understand it, is coming, being carved off of that other giant piece of backline to become part of the new lot one.
That's correct. It, that's parcel B in the, the drawing.
Okay, so this is going to be parcel B, and then this bit here.
Is parcel A.
A, and together with the new boundary, which is a southerly and easterly, there the L-shaped new lot two, right?
Okay. All right. And the reason why I wanted to take a look at this, because part of the A and R is, is access. So we've got this area here. And I'm just wondering how that looks. So I'll stop, Sharon, you can go back to your plot plan.
Okay.
Those, are there any concerns about access? I guess is what I would be saying.
Uh, no, we've, we've worked with an engineer, and they've developed a grading plan. It's, it's pretty straight, straight and flat, a little bit of a hill, but nothing above an 8% grade.
And we don't have any wetlands to contend with there?
Uh, no.
Will this require a scenic roads permit?
I believe so.
Not, not to create a lot, but if they were to come in to, you know, develop it, yes. Make a driveway opening, that would be later. We'd be where trees and stone walls would be examined.
Right.
But this is an area and the possibility of access over the frontage. So that's what we're-
Yeah, the only thing that I'm seeing there is, you know, the trees, the stone wall. Yeah.
I don't think it looks wet. I mean, it looks pretty much like that on the edge of Garden Street to me, which is relatively flat-ish. There are plenty of driveways coming off there.
Yeah, no, I don't see any problem with access. Now, I'm, I'm looking at, at Google Map Street View, and yeah, it all looks fine.
Yeah, he'll be back in for the scenic roads.
Yeah, he'll be back.
Yeah, but I mean, at this point, we just have to make sure the access is good.
Right.
And I just wanted, I just wanted to confirm that.
Okay.
But verify.
Exactly. All right, any other comments from other members of the public? I know there are a few folks-
Me, me, Brian.
Brian, yes, you're someone.
I just wanted to say hello to Steve. You may remember me. My son Matt went to Penn Tucket with you.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And he wanted to pass on his good wishes. We were with him over the weekend. He's now living out in Las Vegas. And so he extends his good wishes for your-
Oh, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Future, oh, it's Brian, yeah, you don't need Mr. Murphy. Thanks.
Old habits.
I have no, no problem with the, or questions on the application.
Well, that's a nice- He only makes me call him Mr. Murphy.
All right, well, then I think we now all have understood what's happening and, and, you know, feel certain about what we're-
Last question?
Oh, yes.
So it's just, I understand what's being done here, so I have no exceptions to it. But the, the, the plan does call out both parcel A and the other parcel as not a buildable, parcel B not buildable.
Well, that's, that's, that's the, well, I'm going to speak for, for the applicant here, for the engineer. I would say that is the pre condition.
Right, so, so the question I have is more of form than anything. Is this typical to denote that not a building lot? And then presume that everybody that follows can understand what that is intended to convey?
Well, I think so. It, it says right there that is to be combined with other land of the trust. And then under B, I can't read it right now, but I suspect it says, can you scroll down just a little bit?
Yeah, they're not, it's not considered a buildable lot without both of them combined. So without A, you can't, B is not-
I understand, I just, I just-
Yeah, to my mind, that is sufficient, because then it does describe lot two accurately.
Right.
It's, and it tells that it includes A and B, and it gives its area. So I don't know, Chris, you can tell me if I'm making too many assumptions there.
Yeah, Madam Chair, that is not a term that's required by the statute, but it's commonly used with these type of applications or plans so that a buyer or anyone who's interested in purchasing lots understands where the building is not to be considered.
So my follow-on, so my follow-on to that is that, in, in my mind, better form is to make sure there's a notation explaining what we're, we all are talking about. I know it might be convention, but it just seems to me that where you have a narrative, you could make sure that the narrative clearly calls that out. That's all I'm commenting on.
Well, I guess I would just say, we don't have the engineer here. I don't think it's a flaw, and to my mind, the fact that it describes what it's going to be combined with, right there.
Yeah, the only thing that I, the only thing that would be dirt cheap to do, not free, but very cheap, would just be to add a note for-
Yes, thank you.
Where, you know-
See, yep.
That's where I was going, Ray, thank you.
Uh, there you go.
And what would you, you know, it's on the, it's on the drawing.
Very simply say parcel A to be combined with parcel B to form lot two, which then will be a buildable lot.
Thank you, that's what I would say. I'm, I'm not asking it be done right now, I just suggest that, that it's better, it's, it's better to be clearer.
I agree with you.
Well, so a suggestion might be that we ask the applicant, we can give you that language again, that we ask the applicant to have his engineer add that as note four up in that upper left-hand corner before we sign it. Is that a reasonable thing to do, Chris? Will that?
Yeah, you can't condition A and R approvals.
No, it's not a condition, it's for clarification. I think I would be inclined to still move that we would endorse it.
Right.
But that we would ask for that just for clarification, so that future, you know, folks at the registry know what's going on. It seems clear to me, but two out of-
I, I agree with Rob. The way it is right now, I, I think it, it could confuse people, and we might be doing somebody a big favor in the future.
Yes, agreed.
Having note four added.
It, it would do someone in the future a good favor, and I think it's good form that we might keep in mind.
I think my language is something along like parcel A to be combined with parcel B to form lot two, which will then be a buildable lot.
Okay, so, Mr. Hayden, do you understand what it is that we're talking about here? We're kind of in the weeds.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I, I just, it, it does say that when, in both of the parcel A and B.
Yeah, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm listening to my experienced board members, and I don't think it will be too difficult for you to, I don't know who your engineer is, I can't see the title block right now, but-
Millennium Engineering.
Yeah, so ask Millennium to just reissue this.
So does that mean that we need to submit for the next planning board meeting?
No, 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 not at all.
Just want to clarify.
So I'll, I will. Are we going to do this? If I moved that the planning board endorsed this drawing as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law, and then we make a suggestion that before it's signed, that note be added, that won't be out of order, will it, Chris? The suggestion won't be part of the motion, it'll be-
And, and it's a suggestion, it's not a requirement. It's just that we'd like to see it on the plan when we sign it. But if, if it weren't there, we could sign it anyway.
Yep. Chris is wrestling.
I think that would be okay. Typically, you have an application before you, an A and R that's properly prepared. The suggestion would improve it, but it is, does it meet the requirements for endorsement? Yes. So to change it, or a future signature would require a new plan coming back before the board.
It's the sort of thing where in the past, we've even gotten, you know, if the engineer were here to approve it verbally, it could be actually handwritten on the plan. But we, you know, since the engineer has stamped this, we, we can't, well, engineer, excuse me, the surveyor. Since the professional surveyor has stamped us, we can't alter the plan without that permission.
Right.
I don't want to overly complicate things.
I'm too late.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
So let's endorse, let's endorse this, move this forward. What I would ask the board to do is consider that it is always better to not have these ambiguities exist, and I can tell you that this is an ambiguity that need not exist.
Yep.
Thank you. But I would move this forward, because they came forward, like Chris said, they came forward in good faith.
Right, no, I understand.
To just know what we want to do.
I, I agree with you, and I will just say in defense of Brian and myself, it's only 50% ambiguous, okay? It's not 100% ambiguous.
Exactly, yeah, but I-
All right.
Ambiguous because you've been in the field, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so let, so I'm-
I just looked over the application as well, and I don't find reassuring language there.
I, I agree, I didn't want to even raise that, Ray. Let's, let's move this forward for the four people that are sitting here.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear, but yeah, okay.
I will tell you, the form itself, it leads itself to ambiguity.
Yep, okay, well, duly noted. All right, I, I'm going to make a motion to, that the board endorse this plan as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, Ann Bardine, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Rob Phillips, aye.
All right.
Brian, wake up.
He's just, he's-
I was waiting for, for Deb, and she's not here.
Exactly right.
All right, well, to the applicants, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board.
All right. All right, so now we will go to the next item on the agenda, which we flipped around. Discussion of the MBTA community's bylaw. This is a discussion really informational for the board and anyone else who may be interested that, I think we all know the process that's been happening. The MBTA working group reported to the select board. The select board made a decision on a parcel. The select board's decision created the need for some modifications to the written zoning bylaw, specifically having to do with the location of the zone and a few other sort of technical details. I had understood that Ian Burns from MVPC, who was part of that process, would be here. Any updates, Chris? Is he just a little late?
I think he's a little late, he had another-
I'm here, he's here.
I'm here.
Oh, you are, I don't see you.
Perfect timing.
Where do I not? Oh, there you are, hooray, all right.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, Ian.
Thank you very much, Ian. So, uh, let's just jump right into it. I noticed a number of changes that have been made, and I think my question for Ian is, which ones do you know about, and did you make, and would you explain why? And, you know, the rationale for the changes.
Sure, happy, happy to explain a bit. I think, I don't know how much of this we'll cover at the public hearing, so I'll be brief, and then I'm sure we can cover more at the public hearing. But the changes that were necessary are mostly because the new district now consists of multiple parcels versus the previously proposed district at the Springtown meeting was only one parcel. And so the biggest difference that you'll notice is the elimination of the development area approach that was in the previous bylaw. And so that approach was allowed by HLC when we were looking at EO HLC, when we were looking at just one parcel, because you could say that you had to designate one area within that parcel to develop. However, now that we're doing it across three parcels, we don't have that option. However, it doesn't make a, a, a large difference in your compliance metrics. So we had to delete the development area definition, and there was a whole section in the bylaw that dealt with defining the development area and defining the corresponding open space of the development area that we eliminated in the bylaw itself. There were other small changes that needed to be made throughout the bylaw. I did a first pass of it, made changes. Town council then looked at it as well and made recommended changes. I'm happy to speak to any that you may have specific questions about, but from my perspective, the largest changes dealt with the development area and the reconfiguration of the parcels.
Okay, great, yeah, that was a big one, and, and you've answered my question. I noticed just some other global changes, which I think are straightforward, almost like ministerial changes, where the word guidelines has become regulations now that regulations have actually-
Stop right there, hello?
Oh, have been promulgated. But yeah, we're going to go page by page in a minute.
All right.
So that explains that. And, but then we get to, hang on, where, what page were you on, Brian? Back where it starts getting-
We're starting at the beginning here, so.
Yeah, okay, here's the beginning. So let's just go page by page.
Yeah, can we expand that slightly, please?
Explain what?
Expand it?
Make it larger?
Yes, it's a little, it's too small, yeah, sorry, it is small. A couple of ticks would be great.
I can't.
Do you know the, the thing where you hold down the control key, and then you use the mouse wheel?
There we go. I don't know that trick, but-
This is good, I like this one.
Is that big enough?
Yep.
It is, thank you. All right, let's go to the next page, there's very little on this one. All right, so that's the new area showing the multi-parcels. Straightforward, right?
Well, it is straightforward. So just to summarize things real quick here, all the changes in the text and everything, they all made sense to me. And I, I, what Ian just said was what I determined before the meeting tonight. I do have a lot of questions about this selection for the development area, but that might not be something to discuss tonight. I don't know.
Well, let me just say, first of all, that's not the development area, that's the so-called designated, what do you call it? Zone, but district designated. At the district, it's made up of multiple parcels.
Understood. So I, I have comments about this overlay district and questions about the overlay district, but I don't know that that's on the agenda for tonight. Do I withhold those until the public hearing? And then I've got questions about the public hearing.
Okay.
And what will be asked to do at that public hearing.
Well, as I think we all understand, this came out of a selection process whereby the MBTA working group whittled down ideas and came up with, I think, three recommendations or two to select where the select board chose this.
I understand that.
Yeah, Rob, you are our member on the MBTA working group. Can you have anything to say about Joyce?
Yeah, you, you know, Wendy's sitting in right now, the chair.
Right, but you were, you were our member, so we'll ask you first.
So we went through a process of reviewing suggestions from the public at large. As Van said, we got down to three final candidates. The study group commented about pros and cons. We did not make a recommendation, although I can tell you that I feel comfortable that what the select board voted for was, in fact, what would have been the suggestion from the work-study group. One of the things I think you should note is that Ian has been working on this stuff for two years. And I got to tell you, it's, it's one of those things where it's like hiring an attorney who has to research the law rather than hiring an attorney who does that sort of law day in and day out. He's been really, really helpful to us. Like I, I think Ray said, you know, the, the language changes were well done. And, and I think then the issue is, as had been described months ago, we would go through a certain process, arrive at a certain place, and then there will be a referral to the, us, the planning board, so that we can go through the public hearing process. That's where we're at.
No, I, I totally understand all that.
I know, I know, Ray, I want to say it that way for a reason, because what, what I think you, you are looking to go through is whether this, in fact, is a good choice or not. And I would tell you that I think that we can have a discussion about why it's a good choice. We can certainly entertain the notion that there might have been something out there better than this, although we did not see it, and there's a lot of reasons why we stayed away from 97% of what was, was recommended that we look at. So I think you're right to ask what we're discussing now, why we're discussing it, and when we'll follow on with some of the other questions. I don't know that all of them need to be taken up tonight.
I understand that, my, you know. And I understand if, if you don't want to, you know, Ann, if this is, if this is not the time for me to air my questions and concerns. And, and that's fine. I don't, I don't have to. But then I would assume at the public hearing, it would be appropriate for me to comment at that time.
Yes, absolutely.
Although that could be a bit awkward. I, it's my understanding that the only reason the planning board is holding the public hearing is because it's required by law.
That's right.
The planning board be the entity that holds the public hearing. And in most communities that have passed the MBTA bylaw, it was also the planning board that came up with the bylaw. And it was, so, you know, you'd go into the public hearing, and of course, the planning board would be, presumably, the majority of the planning board would be in favor of this election being presented to the public at the public hearing.
Yes.
So, and it could be, you know, if, if, if that's when it's most appropriate for me to express my concerns and have questions answered, I'll be glad to wait until then to do it. I'm just pointing out that it could be a little awkward.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, just to add on to what Ray said is absolutely accurate, purpose of the public hearing is also for the planning board to generate a recommendation. It's usually a motion that's always in favorable terms, maybe in favorable terms. And then that is the opportunity to also provide dissenting opinions in the report to town meeting. That's typically how comments by board members and deliberation and input is entered into the record for town meeting.
Okay.
So that might be useful.
Yes, so, so Ray, I, I love talking about this stuff, and I love talking about it with this, all these board members and all of us have opinions. I think at this point, I would like to keep this meeting to a discussion of kind of the nuts and bolts of the language. You know, this came to us, I would have to say, it's another 11th hour kind of situation, given workloads and timing and EO HLC review and all those kinds of things. So we, we are presented with this. I'd like to get our nuts and bolts questions answered, answered about why what we thought was a pretty darn good bylaw has been changed. So Ian's just explained the development area thing, that's straightforward.
That's fine, and, and I accept it.
Let's, yeah.
The changes in the language is we don't have a big parcel with the development area within it.
Exactly.
Exactly, we now have the parcels as outlined here.
This has been recast with, with different goals, I'll just leave it at that.
No, no, that's fine. And, and, you know, if, in the, in the interest of expediency, I have gone over the bylaw, the proposed bylaw with its changes, and I do not find any fault, as you put it in the nuts and bolts, of making the proposed bylaw match this selection.
Okay.
So I think that the changes that have been made make perfect sense here. And it's, and as you also phrased it earlier, I think it's, it's pretty much just administrative changes.
Yes, I think it is.
That we're facing, so I, you know, I, I don't think it's a, it, it's a big deal. I think that the edits make sense.
Yes, so I think this is the place for, for the straight reading of the text.
That's fine.
And then the explication of the emotional side of the text is perhaps more appropriate in a public hearing. I will ask Ian, though, since he, oh, excuse me, Rob, yes, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to endorse what Ray just said. I went through this as well. The, the, the changes are the ones that are necessary to make this be the way it has to be if we're going to pass it and then have it approved at the state level. So, and again, I, I would tell you all that Ian has been really good and knows the backstories of a lot of why this does comply. does comply and why it will be approved by the state.
Okay, well, I I have every confidence in Ian, but I'm gonna be Ray Cook and I'm gonna trust but verify this time on behalf of Brian and me. And say that that's all fine, but then at the latter part of it, there are like reams of pages that were eliminated. And I just need to take a quick look at those with an expert, in this case, Mr. Burns, who will explain why those things were taken out, if possible, please. So let's scroll down till we get to the really dramatic cutting. Now, that's development area, easy. We we've understood that one. Yep, we got that. Okay, keep going, keep going. Now we're getting somewhere. Now, what was this all? What what's the heading for the previous?
This is this is all development area stuff.
This is all related to development. Okay.
Permitted uses, yeah.
Alright, so we don't need that anymore. Got it?
If we, you could scroll back up a little bit, Chris. Keep going back up.
Okay, where are we?
So if if I may, kinda jump in here, go up a little bit.
Yeah, this all, it says right there.
Eight point four point five point.
Development area, yep.
Right, so all the eight point four point five stuff obviously makes sense that it be deleted.
It all gets deleted. Gotcha.
Yeah, and then there's another section, if you scroll down, please, Chris. Where we get into, there you go, the protected open space. Because we don't have protected open space here. Because the the lots are the lots as designated are the are the MBTA community's overlay district. So we don't need anything about the protected open space, which used to exist in the back of the Nat property.
Yeah, let let me clear, hold please. Every inch of those lots are developable.
Correct.
And they're not going to be set aside for something.
Let's let Brian answer, I mean Ian, answer that question.
So this section that was deleted, the protected open space section, is referring to the protected open space outside of the development area that was in your previous bylaw. However, there is still an open space requirement within the parcels that you have on the proposed bylaw. And that was the same as how you had it before. You had protected open space, which is here for the development area. And then you also had an open space requirement within your development area, which was a percentage of the development area. The difference is that open space isn't protected in the capital P sense, where it's not being recorded as as a conservation restriction. But they do have to leave, I forget the percentage, a certain percentage of the parcels as open space if it is redeveloped.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
That's a good thing to understand. Thank you. Okay, now for some reason we have renumbering here, but there's nothing in that paragraph. That doesn't make sense to me, but that's a clerical thing, right? Eight point four point four point three, but there's.
Because we deleted the other section wholesale, I think it renumbered.
But I don't see, there's no text for that, though. There is no eight point four point four point three.
A software glitch.
Just an error, okay. Now we get to dimensional standards. This is all renumbering because of what's just gone on. I think this all pretty much stands as it was. Okay, yes, this all looks normal. That was and then this piece right here, that was added because we have a different access to the lot than we had before. Correct? Okay. Alright, same thing, access related to the access, renumbering, renumbering. Renumbering, renumbering. Referring to that access business. Okay, all related to that. And then, wait, hang on. So what's going on here?
We don't have the, it's not part of the groundwater protection.
Not in groundwater protection. Okay, so that does no longer apply. Okay, and there's no more mixed use, so that gets rid of that stuff.
There's your open space.
There's open space.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is distinct from the protected open space.
Which was unique to that parcel.
Correct.
Okay, unchanged, unchanged, renumbering.
Lighting.
Oh, because we don't have non-residential anymore, so we don't have mixed use and that comes out for that reason. We do need to just understand this. I'm sorry, it's a little tedious, but that's more mixed use. It's coming out. Okay, got it? Uh, yeah, regulations versus guidelines. Okay. Same regulations, same regulations. Okay.
That's it.
Might be done. What is the size of the new parcel in acres? Notice that answer to that.
It's about seven point six three.
That's correct.
Okay, so that gives us some room for the compliant open space and for site circulation, those kinds of things that don't count. Where do we stand? Uh, cause I, you know, it was a working group that was following the timeline most closely. Where does the town stand on the the review by EO HLC at this point? Can you answer that, Ian?
Yep, so we resubmitted all of the documents to EO HLC. Actually, today they got the final copy of all of them. And EO HLC said that they could get feedback back to the town by the public hearing in October.
And and the the original feedback from them said that we had a number of things that we must prove. Do you feel that these revisions should satisfy their requests for proof?
Yes, and I'm happy to answer questions on them if you'd like, but we addressed all of them, had a couple of calls with EO HLC and looked at all their points and they should all be addressed now for their satisfaction.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing maybe Chris can tell me that we should expect as a planning board is to see some sort of acknowledgement that this language or a very close version of it has been approved by EO HLC, right?
Correct, and we want something pretty complete by the time it's advertised. So that would be two weeks before the public hearing. We may not get everything we need by then, but that's okay, as long as it's roughly equivalent. Then it'll be fine to have it on file with the town clerk two weeks in advance of the public hearing for public review.
And am I correct in assuming that if there are last minute changes or whatever, there'll be some sort of handout for town meeting so people can see the exact language without?
Well, I would I would hope to to make that known at the public hearing. Because we might have had that for at least two weeks, right? Might have, when will we hear from, we won't hear from them in a week, will we? Ian, before advertising?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So it could be tweaked a little bit right up to the public hearing. And then we have a short period where there can be further tweaks coming out of the public hearing. But then it has to go to the printers in the final warrant, so there is a timeline there. So we'll only have about a week after the public hearing to.
Once again, uh, it I contended, I asserted a few months ago that the warrant is required to have language sufficient to inform the public of the business at hand. But that the actual motions that are made on the floor can differ from the language of the warrant. Um, as long as it doesn't change the nature of the and and that was, has always been my understanding, but I was told that I was incorrect in that previously. And am I correct that it wouldn't have to be word for word exactly the same as what is moved on the floor? In other words, could there be, coming out of the public hearing, that unless the public hearing is simply a formality in a rubber stamp event, coming out of the public hearing, there has to be a period of time where some small changes could be made or suppose even major changes, though I don't anticipate that. But it it's my belief that the warrant language does not have to be precisely what is moved at the actual town meeting. Am I correct in that, Chris?
I think what we're dealing with here is the final booklet that goes to town meeting. And that's somewhere around October twenty first or tw- that's why it's important to get everything in on October seventh at the public hearing. It can be tweaked a little bit in what's called the four corners of the intent of the language, but not much. And my understanding is, once it goes into the final warrant, you could have a sheet with suggested changes by the sponsor, the planning board, very minor changes. But that's generally to be avoided. And then you rely on motions in town meeting for friendly motions and so forth to adjust. So that's what I've typically seen.
I will also say, and I'm not counsel, so the town council can weigh in on it, but I've seen in other communities on this issue where there's been non-substantial red line changes in the time after it's been printed. And in the communities that actually put a projection at their town meeting of the bylaw being discussed at that time, they have had the motion to adopt it as redlined and presented at town meeting at that time. And that's been minor changes that I've seen in other communities. I don't know what counsel they received from or what advice they received from council, but I have seen that elsewhere.
And by the way, just to be absolutely clear, I am not trying to be secretive. I don't have any kind of hidden agendas or anything like that. This this is just what you just said, Ian, what was what I thought was true and and I mentioned all this only to take a little bit of pressure off. That if the booklet gets published and we find out later that there should have been a change in a word, comma, a renumbering thing got screwed up when it got printed and we didn't realize it, that those sorts of changes are.
Right, Ray, your 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 prior belief is in fact true. I'm not sure what exception you were presented or by whom, but as you know, in life, there's a lot of people who have a lot of opinions and not all of them approve.
Yeah, well, it's just that routinely.
Yeah, no, you're right. There's there's always, there's always some amount, like Chris uses the term four corners. If you operate within the four corners of what you've published, you have leeway.
Yeah, I mean, it's every town meeting I've ever attended, the actual motions made on the floor vary from what's written in the booklet. Sometimes it's what fund is going or where it's gonna go back to or the amount changes a little bit.
Or it depends on what Barry Fogel wants to stand up and speak to. Yeah, so you're 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 exactly correct. It's just you always have to have the caution of of there's a point at which you've actually changed the thing and you don't want to have it be arguable that you've changed it. That would be.
No, the process to do that would be to make a a motion on the floor.
Right. Well, I think.
It still only goes so far on a motion on the floor.
Well, you could make a motion to amend on the floor.
Yeah, you can't, you can't go too far with that. That's the point.
Madam Chair, could I clarify something from earlier as well in the discussion?
Yes, please.
Um, just to the point of the pre-adoption review feedback we're waiting on from EO HLC, I just wanna make sure expectations are clear on that. So they call it pre-adoption review specifically because they never give approval of the bylaw before you go to town meeting. So do not expect EO HLC to come back before your public hearing and say, this bylaw is approved, go ahead to your town meeting vote. They will give feedback and likely there are gonna be small things. There could be little tweaks that we need to make, but nothing major. And so they always send a letter and say, here are the things that we caution you about. Feel free to move forward. They have never in any community said, it's approved, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so they have their their ways of doing it.
It's very technical, but I don't want folks to be disappointed when you see that they send a letter and don't say, yay, it's perfect.
Well, that letter will be going to the select board, just for clarity, right?
And then, you know, I mean, I I wouldn't expect this to happen. I don't, I don't know of it ever having happened, but I would suspect there's a chance that something could go through that pre-approval review. But in the end, the Attorney General might have a problem with it.
That's always a a possibility with everything that passes a town meeting, right? Every bylaw.
We we've seen that before.
Yeah, it's a multi-step process for sure. Alright, so there we have a little wiggle room, but not too much. I mean, if there's not some wiggle room, doesn't it ma- make the public hearing a little bit of a pointless exercise? You know, if if you're not really able to take comments that you can take action.
No, I I think what.
I think that's what you just said, isn't it? Yeah.
No, 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 you you because there could be substantial changes coming out of the public hearing.
That's what I'm saying. So you want the public hearing to to have give true opportunity is what I'm saying.
To be meaningful.
Yes, yes.
Well, the deliverable, Madam Chair, once again, is your report from the board to town meeting. Whether you find it favorable as is, whether you suggest minor changes to make it favorable or whether you don't agree with it at all. So that's deliverable.
Am I correct in that we make that report to town meeting? Technically, we're not, we're not going back to the select board and giving the report to them, that our report is straight to town meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and yes, I mean, certainly not so much now, but certainly historically, there have been town meetings in which the, you know, the finance committee or others had varying points of view on their boards and their rationales that appeared in the booklet were quite long and, you know, everything was aired there. So we'll we'll see. We'll hope that this goes smoothly, but the public hearing is for the public. And we will present what we have to the best of our ability and see what the responses are. Alright, let's see. Chris, am I missing anything?
No, just.
Oh, go ahead.
Town council brought up, there is a part of the regulation that requires a determination of eligibility for the district. Now that we know the district, the planning board can do that, but you don't have to do it tonight. And I would hold off for the public hearing for that. And I think the only other task for you tonight is to determine the format of the October seventh public hearing, so we can get the legal ad out and say it's gonna be hybrid or or so.
On that, is is there, is there an itemized list of what needs to be true about this proposal, this overlay district, for us to say we find it eligible?
I guess I'm curious about why we need to find it eligible at all. I thought that was a determination made by EO HLC as well. Ian, ideas?
So the the determination of eligible is not in reference to the three A district. What council is giving feedback on was when the state law was changed a year, three years ago now to allow zoning to pass with a fifty percent threshold at town meeting with, if it was just housing issues, it only can pass with a fifty percent threshold if it is quote, an eligible location, according to Massachusetts state law. So when a planning board brings forward a zoning bylaw amendment, they are encouraged to say, we've determined this is an eligible location under that section of general law where it can be a fifty percent majority and not a two-thirds majority at town meeting. It's not anything to do with section three A or MBTA communities.
Got it. So eligibility, just a second, is sort of a term of art here. I understand that. Thank you. Ray, go ahead.
Yes, but it it for for me to vote that it is eligible, I would want to know what criteria there is. So that's why I ask, is there an itemized list that defines the parcel as eligible? Because.
I think there was something in the packet, wasn't there, Chris? It has to do with whether it's for housing, I think.
I mean, there's there's housing there now.
But, well, no, 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 well.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Well, okay, so for the overlay district, when I was looking into this before, eligible parcels were those parcels that were not excluded parcels. And what determined whether or not a parcel was excluded was a parcel where it was not possible to to have the development or where it was not practical.
So we're we're now.
No, I think, I think this is, yeah, this is the, yes, excuse me, this is the the fork in the road that that Ian explained a minute ago, and we'll go over it again. Eligibility is used in defining two different things. What you're describing, Ray, is the one in which we learn whether or not a particular piece of land is eligible to be zoned under this zoning bylaw, right, or under this statute, three A, whatever it's called. The other one has to do, is is quite arcane and has to do with whether or not a fifty percent or a two-thirds vote is needed. And that is a function of what Ian, please finish my sentence.
That's a function of what you need to have multifamily housing by right. So let me just backtrack a little bit. And the reasoning why the recommendation is that your planning board determines it is an eligible location, eligible location is because there isn't a strict definition of an eligible location in general law or in regulations. And so the law itself says that you can have a simple majority vote to adopt a new zoning district for multifamily housing by right in a gen- in an eligible location. In a gen- in an eligible location. However, then communities said, well, what is an eligible location? And the state didn't quite have a defined answer. And so the advice of municipal lawyers kind of across the state, the general consensus was. Maybe we should just have our planning board say it is an eligible location. Therefore, if there is any litigation in the future regarding this by law you adopt. You have it documented that your planning board said, okay, it's an eligible location for a simple majority vote to adopt this overlay district. But the only thing in general law, and I should pull it up in case I'm quoting it wrong. Is that it is for ha- multifamily housing or housing by right to be uh permitted there. And it says by right in an eligible location without a definition.
As this, as has been done throughout this state, this is clearly eligible. In the manner that Ian just described. What, what I'm interested in is I think Ray has a different question regarding the term eligible. And uh, I would think that it's important for us to know. That uh, and Ian, you're gonna have to speak to this, but we have. Basically been told that the parcel that we've been submitting here. They don't take exception to as long as we cleaned up certain things that they've already enumerated. They may come back and enumerate some others, but Ian, do you have any indication? That this parcel fails as a three A parcel? Thank you. This, thi- this is like, this is the conversation we need to have, but not tonight, Ray.
No, that's fine. It's just I've been told, I've been told tonight, wait a minute, I've been told tonight that the planning board needs to. Perhaps as a formality, state that we, the planning board, find this parcel eligible.
Eligible for fifty percent.
No, 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 if, yeah, if, when we do, it allows, it allows the vote to be a fifty percent vote. I get that. But we need to make that statement that we, the planning board, find it eligible.
Yes.
And so it's natural for me, and there's been some circular reasoning going on here tonight. It's natural for me to say, okay, what do I look at? So that when I compare this parcel to this list of criteria, I can say, yes, I find it eligible. And it's insufficient for me to, to hear that somebody said that. It's, it's, it's okay, because I don't know what that means. And Ian just said that there was no formal definition of what was eligible. And so their workaround was just to have a planning board say it's eligible.
Because it's multifamily housing. Yes, we've, we've already, we've already as a town gone down this path. But you, you're raising a town council question, not a planning board question.
Right, so.
Can I, can I clarify something? I'm sorry, I, I wanna correct a misstatement that I had earlier. I was just, I just pulled up. Um, chapter forty eight, the general laws to see what I might be missing here. So there is a definition of eligible location. I will send it to you. The reasoning that I was trying to attach this to was eligible location is kind of a broad definition and up to interpretation. I'll send it to you. So you can look at it. And it was up to communities to determine if this was an eligible location. So I was wrong. There's a definition of it. When communities ask who determines if there's an eligible location, there was no answer to that. And so I will pull that up so that you have it. What I will add is that this definition of eligible location is not only used. For um threshold guidance. They'd use it in other situations for like forty R districts and other situations to determine eligible locations. But in this context, we're just talking about the voting threshold. I will pull up that definition so that you all have it.
Thank you.
That's fine. And that's, that's excellent. I, just to be clear. Uh, whether or not I like this parcel, if I can just, you know, see what the criteria is for eligible. Even, even if I were to hate this selection, I would still vote that it is eligible.
Right.
I just need, I just need something to look at. I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be.
Thank you. I think uh, town council will be available at the, the public hearing.
Exactly. Let me just, yeah.
She can speak to this, I think, um, very definitively, so maybe uh, something to, to hold off until then.
Yes, so, so I'm gonna suggest the following. Ian uh will send the information that he has to Chris. Chris can distribute it to all of us. I agree with you, Ray, that I'm not comfortable voting for something just because we're supposed to vote for it. And I don't know what it is, and they've made us responsible for something that's undefined. So since there's a definition, we will learn what it is. We'll take a look at it and we will, you know, it'll, it will become quite clear, I'm sure.
Al- also, if we could, let, let's be very clear when we use the term. This is like affordable now. You have to be very clear what eligible aspect you're talking about.
I understand. And that's, you know, if we're confused by it, there will be a lot of confusion. So we will spend some time. Comparing and contrasting the two kinds of eligible, and hopefully we'll be able to move on from that to something more substantive. All right, so uh, the remaining uh piece of housekeeping is to. Uh, decide this will of course take place at our next meeting, which is October seventh. I'd like to make it at seven fifteen P M. I think that gives time for everyone to. Find Zoom and get organized and that. Uh, if we have any A N Rs, I always like to get those in first. So we'll say seven fifteen and it's been suggested by many people and I have decided to accept that suggestion that this be a so called. Hybrid meeting, which will um have an in person component and a remote component. I would really like to have all board members and the town planner there in person. I would hope that any of the other supporting cast of select board, town council, I don't know about Ian, but others be there in person. I would hope for a good turnout uh of residents in person. And for those who are unable to be there for whatever reason, we'll give the convenience of the remote option. Um, Rob, discussion or comments?
No, just, just a couple of things. So likely it's in the annex.
I don't know. We'll have to post that. I don't know.
Well, you should have discussions with, say, Wendy or someone about, about what you, what. I, I mean, we've been having stuff in the annex because of the type of expected crowd that we might get. Second thing is, I, I hate to continue to impose, but uh, I. My, my experience again has been that the great clarifier. Of most of what we discuss on this has in fact been Ian. So if we can. Suggest, beg and plore Ian to be available for that meeting, I think it would be great.
Well, we'll, we'll ask him if that might be possible on October seventh.
Yes, I've, well, first I'll say, Rob, please stop giving me a big head. You've spoken a little too highly of my feedback tonight. So thank you for the kind words. Yes, I, I will be there. I have it on my calendar and I'll be there in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I plan on attending in person.
Yes, I will too.
And maybe the high school would be better just because my experience in the annex is that the acoustic.
No, I, I think the annex has some possibility for, for audio visual type stuff that we.
But let's check with, with, with town manager who has, you know, a lot of experience in, in getting things properly sited and set up.
Madam Chair, uh, just a logistics note, we need to get the legal. Thursday, so we need a place certain with the date certain.
I would say do the, the annex.
I would like to do it at the annex. I think it's much easier logistically. This is not town meeting. Um, you know, I think, yeah.
No, it's fine.
And I don't, I don't know how to, we would manage a Zoom component in. At the high school, I think we'd, we'd just be, you know, we have no idea what their schedule is if the.
Yeah, and if I could, I just wanna say, the events we've had in the annex, the people that are remote have a really hard time hearing.
I know, it's not my preference.
Yeah, when we had the last meeting where we talked about the process, the working group presented the few locations and the select board voted on it. We had it in the first floor hearing room and, yeah, we had about half online and half in the room and the audio quality was very good. I think we had about fifty five people in all.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's the most convenient and comfortable and has the greatest capacity for audio visual.
Will, will there be more than fifty people? We, we were pushing fifty when we had the initial hearings well over a year ago there.
Right, but this is a different site.
No, it was in, it was in the first floor hearing room.
No, 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 that what's being proposed is different.
A different parcel.
It's different parcel. Thank you, Ian. So again, I, I, I would actually ask. And, and Wendy to work out the answer to this question.
I'd really like to not leave this meeting with it open.
And then do it in the select board because I don't think we're gonna have as many people.
I think this, the, the first floor hearing room, that's the board office, Wendy's suggestion. Uh, that would be my, my inclination. Others?
I agree.
Are the other?
It's fine with me. I just share Brian's concern about the number of people that want to attend in person that might not be able to. But I, I agree. I think that it's critical that the audio, I agree with Wendy, that the audio and it has to be good.
And, and oh, by the way, oh, by the way, if, if we ran out of space in whatever. Referred to as the select boards, but the first floor hearing room, it's entirely possible. To those people to go upstairs to the second floor and attend via Zoom on the second floor hearing room, so.
Yeah, there's a Zoom ca-.
Work fine.
Well, that, that, I didn't know that was all.
Yeah, it's all set up. It's wonderful. It's, it's like a hidden gem of the town.
Good, that's, that's.
Okay, okay, well, we've got some running room. It's three weeks away. We've got time to get the sort of logistics part of that attended to, I think, between now and then.
Yeah.
All right, Chris, is that clear enough direction?
Yeah, I think so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got quite an agenda. I'd like to move on to our next item. At this point, number three is the planner's report, but I'm gonna take that up with the other reports farther down because. The planner's report generally has to do with, um, you know, informing us about items on this list and we're working through it as we go along, so. Um, I'm going to move on to the next item, which is dark skies. I know Nancy Powell was here earlier. And I hope we haven't lost her in the weeds of zoning.
Nope, she's there.
No, Nancy, are you here? Oh, there you are. Well, welcome. Thank you for bringing this to our attention and for supplying some information. Do you wanna just quickly give us a recap and a little presentation?
Yeah, I, I didn't send the presentation over to Chris until earlier tonight, so. I don't know, Chris, if you want me to just uh share my screen or if it's.
We have it in the, on the um packet.
We have the brochure. This is what your presentation is?
No, the brochure was more for like something you might share with um, you know. Coming in with projects, um, they're kind of just introductory topics.
So you have something you wanna show us?
Do you have a?
Yeah, I do have like a fifteen slide presentation if. If, if I'm able to share my screen, I could just do that.
Chris, is that something we can do with Nancy? I'm not sure. She doesn't have the.
Let me see if I can share here.
See.
Okay, should be able to share.
All right, let's try it.
See if I remember how to do this.
You just double check. Yep, you should be able to share.
Okay, I'm trying to.
There we go. I see it.
I mean, I'm trying to. Okay, um, so thank you once again for giving me the time to talk about dark skies. Um, I think many of you have lived in West Newbury for a long time. I've been here for a little over ten years. And one thing I do notice is that West Newbury is darker than the surrounding communities. And um, I think it's becoming kind of clear in recent years that this is something we need to pay attention to. And perhaps protect in our planning of development. So. I really, again, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys about this um. So light and night is obviously something that's really beautiful and when it's done correctly. Um, but oftentimes um, the light can be overdone and without. Kind of much thought about what's needed and what's aesthetic. And I know one of the. Uh, goals of the planning board is preserving the rural and aesthetic nature of West Newbury. Um, so if you look at the left graphic, um, you have a street light and normally we want the street light to be directed down. But oftentimes, if you just put up a street light without the proper shields. The light can go horizontally, creating glare like in the picture in the middle. Or even um, project the light upwards um, and glare and just, you know, uh. Undirected light can cause trespass to neighbors um, or. Like in the picture before, you can actually get sky glow where the sky isn't dark anymore, but it's actually pretty light even at night. Um, then one of the kind of common misperceptions is that. Light at night creates safety, that the brighter you make a spot, the safer it is against intruders. And you know, people that you don't want around your house. But as this rates. Sometimes too much light and improperly placed light and especially glare actually. Decreases your night vision and don't allow you to see this person that's standing next to the garage. Um, and there are a lot, lot of choices for lighting your garage. Um, so the picture on the left is a gooseneck light. That's very classic on New England. The picture on the right is just cam lights that's in an overhang over a garage that. You know, properly lights your driveway, which is where you run without kind of causing that glare. Um, I think one of the more alarming things is that in the last fifty to seventy years. The night light has dramatically increased. Uh, most of that is due to technology. Uh, the, get, the lights getting cheaper and also, you know, the switch to LEDs, which is good for energy. Um, but has some unintended consequences. I'm not gonna go into this very much. Um, the side internet, you know, site there has a lot of this information. Don't know that if you turn off lights at night, it saves money and energy. You know, we're doing good things for the planet and climate change. There's a lot of information coming out about how bad my light is for wildlife, like birds and bats, moths, insects. Um, but there's also a lot of research coming out about how bad light um at night and especially blue light is for human health. It's been linked to sleep deprivation, mental health, and even cancer in some situations. Um, you know, I think this is a picture of a, a Milky Way and for many of us, we don't get to see this. Our, you know, if we're lucky, we're kind of seeing a dark skies with a little bit of stars like this and. I think one of the most famous paintings is Van Gogh's Starry Sky. If Van Gogh had looked up and hadn't seen what he would have normally seen, would he have painted the, the starry night? Um, and I think, you know, what, what we're losing when we're losing the stars at night is. People's ability to dream and aspire for greater things and our connection to the universe and to each other. One of the other things that we really uh want to preserve in West Newbury is, is one of the few places where. We have amazing firefly community uh populations in West Newbury. And just like the stars, the stars at night will have too much light. Um, the firefly glows or dimmer and they cannot see each other, so they cannot find each other at night. Uh, for mating purposes. So we're actually reducing fireflies by putting too much light in our backyards. Um, luckily, the Dark Skies International has some very simple guidelines. Uh, five simple steps to think about how you should be lighting at night. And this is one of the resources that I share um. And this is kind of a same thing illustrated. Um, so kind of thinking about what kind of light fixture you have and shield to direct. The light, um, thinking about the color of the light bulbs. Um, we wanna aim towards twenty seven hundred calvins, that kind of really warm glow that we like to see at night. Versus the blue kind of LEDs that is a little bit harsher. And you know, not something we really kind of imagine um at night. Uh, one of the things about night lighting is that unlike other types of pollution. We can actually, when we start implementing strategy. we can actually, when we start implementing strategies, we can recover the darkness pretty quickly. So this picture on the left is an example from 2003 where there was a blackout, electrical blackout. And thousands of people called the police because they saw this thing in the sky that they didn't recognize. And it was a Milky Way. It's the first time they've seen it. But you don't have to wait for a blackout. This is actually the city, city of Philadelphia who implemented a dim the lights ordinance. So at midnight, all those buildings dim their lights and you can see the dramatic difference in the city and think about which one you prefer to see if you were driving up to the city. And closer home, we gave a presentation to the Unitarian Church in Newport last year. And they decided to dim their staple lights during the bird migration. So four, four months out of the year, they dim their lights from 11 o'clock to six o'clock, kind of that timeframe to preserve that darkness. And, you know, a lot of other people are getting into. So this is a glow in the dark mural at Park River National Wildlife Refuge by Jianhui. And she is now actually collaborating with Greenbell. At their property, she's painting stepping stone murals in their reservation. And from now to October, you can sign up to go into their reservations at night to see the stepping stone artwork. And one of them is in West Newbury, the Allway Reservation. So it's just kind of a little plug for, you know, a way to celebrate dark skies in West Newbury. And again, I'm kind of referring back to some of the resources that I did share with Chris. There's really simple things that we can do. So the picture on the right is actually a really helpful flyer that the town of Rockport put out about kind of very classic New England ornamental lights. And there's, they've now made dark, dark sky versions where the light bulb is hidden, but you still have that beautiful glow with the glass, which is kind of what a lot of people are looking for.
Great. Thank you. Very interesting. The board does have, you know, limited, at this point, limited ability to regulate things like lighting. And I know, Brian, you might want to speak to it. You're, you're a fan of this.
Yeah, no, huge, huge fan. I did a lot of commercial instruction work and we were always cognizant of neighbors and whatnot and lighting. And, and I think the board for the, for the projects that we have the ability to regulate under special permit, we are certainly have always promoted the, the use of proper lighting and shielding and, and the, the, particularly the color of, of, of the light. I think this is a terrific idea. I'm, I'm wondering if you have approached the building commissioner, Sam Jocelyn, to see if you could get some support. This is, this could be a town regulation on a building code matter. Because you, you know, many people here in town, you know, they, they build on a regular lot. And we have nothing to do with that. We, we may, as we saw tonight, a, it'll be one house lot extra on Rogers Street. We, we, we can't say anything about what they should do or shouldn't do. But it's, it may be possible that under town regulation on a building code matter, that, that proper light fixtures and sighting and whatnot could, should be encouraged.
Yeah.
I, I will, I'll also say that, and, and I think it's happening, that, that the town is finally going to change out their light fixtures. It's, it, and I, I'm hoping that that's within the coming year. And in particular, the one, and Wendy's going to laugh about this, but the fixture at the town DPW garage should be changed five years ago.
All those who hate wall packs.
Wall packs would be bad.
Yes.
And we, as the town, we should be leading. That's an easy fix. Doing 50 bucks to get a much better wall pack and a light. And, and Pipe Safe Hill is a treasure, but not with those awful lights. And the page school lights could be improved as well, but that's another administrative challenge. But I, I think you're, you're terrific. The only other thing I might add is, is your, your group, or maybe with Wild and Native, that some information, both at the library or whatnot, maybe even through the page school. Kids, kids love to talk about this stuff and they can help encourage their parents.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I don't know. I think we'd be happy to vote and put our name as endorsing this, but you know, regulation wise, we are limited, but you, you're on the right track there.
Yeah. So we, we actually weren't really looking for regulations. What I, when we talked to other towns, there's like over 200 towns in West Newbury, I mean, in Massachusetts that actually have ordinances on dark skies. Most of them are not enforced. What I actually am recommending is more that, and I'll talk to Sam definitely kind of in the near future. But that as projects come in front of you, like some of the resources that I share with Chris, if you can share some of those resources and encourage those projects to look into kind of the dark sky lighting and the importance of preserving dark sky in West Newbury to preserve the character of the town that we live in. If you could just kind of put that, because I think a lot of people don't even think about it. It's not on their radar. But if you can put it on their radar.
You're, you're correct.
If you can think of other resources that might be helpful to developers or projects you're reviewing. I tried to collect some that wasn't very wordy and just kind of have really simple, because I know people are busy. They don't want to like view a 50-page document. You know, so kind of like simple things they can do to kind of shift the, the lighting from bright blue lighting to, you know, correctly sized and intended lighting that are warmer in color.
Well, it's all very interesting. I think the street lighting is being done through the Energy and Sustainability Committee. So I'm sure you, you know, connect with them. There are so many different threads in town, all of whom are similarly and very well intentioned. And I'm kind of hoping that these kinds of things, when we start convening the comprehensive plan, there will be sections in there about rural character and these kinds of things. All of this input would be terrific. You know, when somebody has one source for, this is what we have in town, but, and this is where we want to get to. And these are some of the very concrete steps we could take to get there. I think that would be really great. So I hope when we begin to convene meetings and visioning opportunities for the comprehensive plan, your folks and others will come. Same thing with the mowing schedule and the native plants and all of this stuff. You know, the town has been supportive when these things come up. So I think, yeah, education, continuing to, to beat the drum is the way to get there.
Thank you, Ann.
Yeah. Other board members or folks want to comment before we move on? Yes, Rob?
So I, I think Brian's recommendation of talking to Sam is great. Sam's always very helpful. Nancy, you're, you're a member of sustainability, correct?
I am actually not.
Oh, you're not? Okay. So, but they're aware of dark skies and they're responsive to it. What's interesting is National Grid won't go down to 2,700 when they replace the vaults. Do you know what their thinking is?
I don't know, but they, they're getting close. I think that the ones that offer them for free is 3,000.
Yeah, exactly. Right. So, so they make you pay for the right one. Okay. Good. Thank you, National Grid. What, what, to, to what Ann was just saying, and I think the comprehensive plan, the visioning, dark skies, but you know, what, what this is a little reminiscent to me of is if, if, if you talked about native plants a decade ago, the amount of people that listened were like, you know, five, 10. Now it's a movement. It's like the old Allo Guthrie song. We've created a movement, Wild and Native. They've, they've been doing a great job. I know you're very active in that. And I think, you know, what Ann said is correct. I think that making this move forward is more about what you've done on Wild and Native, which is education, friendliness, explaining it. The slideshow is great because that's about the attention span of most people nowadays. So I, I'd just like to encourage you to take, avail yourself of the comprehensive plan, like, like Ann said, that, that will be a great way to have people start seeing why this can fit into their life very easily. It's our type of community.
Yep. That's right. Another thing that you could have mentioned, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, that had very little ability to prevail was trails. And now trails are a selling point and a fantastic amenity and everybody loves. So, you know, just have to keep after it. I see Ray has his hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, I've got some lampposts that are in the bad category. But I'm researching light bulbs that are, have half chrome top to them so that they shine down.
Yes.
The only reason I mentioned is, is that I bet you if there was a modest program where you help people get those bulbs, you know, I might be able to, I don't know, through the energy committee or something like you buy a dozen of these or whatever.
Right, right.
I, I think people would jump on it.
We used to do that with compost bins.
Right. And, and, and in the way that the garden club does seedlings. I mean, there are all kinds of things. So we just need to get right people talking together. So we'll get there.
I guess I'll definitely follow up on them. Thank you so much for your time again.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right. Thank you, Nancy. We'll, we'll see you again when we start visioning together.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Well, that was uplifting, wasn't it? It was fun.
Yeah.
Some good stuff.
It is good stuff. All right, I'm going to move on. Number five is the Planning Work Plan. And this is a document I, that was originally, my recollection is this was originally put together by Leah, when you see the date of August 2022. And it was as much as anything, and it, her effort, which I think was very worthwhile, to leave a good record of where many, many, many things went as she was leaving.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh huh. We had a little interruption in the packet availability and that was on me. The wrong file got loaded to the packet for this item.
Right.
And so we had to make a correction there.
Right.
So going forward, we'll just make sure I have a, a last look at the packages before they go out to you. But that's what happened there.
Yes. So this is the one that was sent earlier today, and I don't know if everyone's seen it, but I'm going to suggest that given our, a few other things we would really need to accomplish tonight, we don't go through this with a fine tooth comb. But I think it needs to be looked at. I would suspect, just off the top of my head, 40% of it is either done or irrelevant by now. Time has passed. And that members try maybe for the, let's say for the meeting on October 21st, to pick your five favorite priority, really want to get to this items. We each come in with our five items. We will see how much crossover there is and persuade one another of, maybe it'll turn out to be four or maybe it'll turn out to be seven. But some worthy things that can form a focus for us for the starting next year, once we have MBTA well put to bed.
Okay, so I, I'm just making a note. So that's for the October 21st.
21st, don't you think?
Okay.
We could start. We'll see what else comes up, but I think, I don't want to let it go too long. You know, we've, we've skirted around this sort of thing for a long time and now it's time.
Yeah, it'll be a good run up to the visioning and the comprehensive.
Right, right.
That's true too. Yeah, that's true too. So I think all of us, I know the select board had a, has one of these sorts of things annually. You, you can't accomplish your goals if you haven't decided what they're going to be. So let's all just make an effort to come up with a shortlist, if you will.
Yep.
At some point, maybe I can sit with Chris, who's coming into this party and having to hit the ground running. All the things that are, you know, that are just done and we'll get rid of those quickly.
And that's, yeah, that's the one, I'm confused. We, we, we got a, we got a, the, the frontage thing sent today. Where was this?
No, that's another thing. We'll get to frontage. We got there.
No, I, no, I know. But was, was that?
Oh, no, I think this was, I think in the update, this was linked.
This is just LinkedIn.
Linked at 5A.
Okay, I'm afraid I didn't look at that one. Okay.
Yeah, I think it was, but not to worry because it will be carried as an item for future agendas.
Yeah.
And will be resent in time to look at it. I, I don't know how all of you keep track of your planning board files and attachments at home. It gets to be pretty overwhelming. There's a lot of information. So.
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is produced frontage. It's a zoning issue. I know you've been looking at it for a while, but also something that would be well served by the comprehensive plan.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, yeah, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but yeah, we'll get there.
Hundred percent agree with that statement.
I'm still, I'm still lingering on number five of the agenda. So could you just go up? Okay, so number six is the memo about parks and rec. And I know a lot of information was received and I would say the same thing, really. We heard a lot and there were many ideas suggested in the course of the pickleball public hearing, many of which had merit and, or at least were of interest or were causing someone a problem. And we determined that many of these things, although interesting, were not part of that public hearing. But we did decide to sort of record them. So we didn't lose track of them because they're all good to know about. And again, I would say there's a section of the comprehensive plan having to do with recreation. And I would certainly urge, you know, Parks and Rec Committee and sports interested folks and whoever it is, pickleball players to come. And these kinds of comments, I think, are best placed in that kind of a forum. I don't know. People agree? Yes, Ray?
Yeah, I, I think that's an appropriate place, but I remember that we were just going to send a letter over.
We were, we were.
Yeah. And I think we could still do that without going into great detail. You know, just a couple of notes.
Yes.
That, we think that, that we as a planning board would support an improvement to pedestrian access between the parking, the, I don't know what you call the main parking lot there and Action Cove. So, and, and what was the other one that we were?
Paving, paving, Action Cove.
Parking. Yeah, I, I have to say, I don't disagree with the fact that those things might be good. I'm also quite wary of the fact that we don't, you know, i- is that really what we do? You know, that's land that's all by Parks and Rec. And so I'm a little bit scared.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, hang on. Yep.
We, 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 we decided to pursue the site plan in a particular way. And to a large extent, that was a matter of expediency for the town who wanted to proceed with getting the pickleball court. But when we were talking about certain aspects, like the one that Ray just mentioned, like the inadequate parking that currently exists, serving Action Cove, and then by default is going to be inadequate for the addition of pickleball court. All of the items, certainly all of the items I mentioned in my memo that I sent to Chris were items that properly came before us in a site plan and we elected to go a soft path. And I, for one, did expect that a memo would come out from this planning board covering the items that would have been covered under a normal site plan review process. So I'm, I'm really hoping that we're not going to backtrack on that. We would just be sending something to Park and Rec for, for, for them to consider as they go forward on their quest to improve their recreation areas. I, I, I hope we're not going to not do the memo now.
I, I don't see any harm in it.
I second that.
Come to our attention.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I, I do have reservations about directing, but I, and Rob, and I think we will proceed with, with a sort of bullet pointed memo.
Yes.
But I do want to say that I'm not sure that those things all were really part of our site plan review, that its circulation on the entire site was not actually before us.
Well, because, because that was to handle the overflow parking that's necessary to get people down to the pickleball court because Action Cove parking is inadequate. That is entirely appropriate.
And I frankly.
We would not take up a site, a, a commercial site and, and, and ignore that aspect of it. I'm sorry.
I, I would have, I think we would have voted differently or, or done something where we conditioned. And it may have been a, a, a legal issue, but I think it was in fact a, a significant part of that review process.
We, we took a soft course. And to end, to not. And to end, to not finish that soft course, I, I think is contrary to what we believe that we were, we made accommodations. And, and I'm sorry, the, the accommodations were to appease the, 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 uh, the people that are trying to get it in place this in a timely fashion. But if, if you had told me that we weren't going to take up the fact that parking is inadequate at Action Cove, it's not paved. The fact that, that, that um, uh, that th- there's questions of accessibility on the site when we know that people are going to be walking down. There were other aspects of, of what I put into my memo to Chris, which, you know, I, I you know, everything that you say is, is always arguable, but I think they were things that we all agreed needed attention. And I can tell you that, that uh, that Doug takes no exception to anything that I put in that memo.
Madam Chair, would, it's a pleasure of the board. Would you like for me to take a stab at a draft memo for consideration?
Yes, that'd be great. That would be great.
And I just want to point out, because, you know, I share Anne's concern about it coming off that we're directing. We're, that, that shouldn't be the, the feel of the memo. It's not that we're directing. That, that these are things that we noted in.
We observed.
Site plan review and that these are strong suggestions and you'd have the planning and, you know.
Well, I don't, I don't want to go on, on a record, frankly, I'm sorry, to say that we would support it. I think we can note that these were things that in the normal course of viewing a site.
There's a way to write it.
Yeah, where we are concerned about adequacy of parking and circulation on the site and, and access. All, and signage, all these things which are, we can demonstrably show are part of site plan review.
Thank you.
We did, we did a limited review in order to expedite the project.
Yes, that's fine. And, and how, how do you feel about using the word opportunities here?
Love it. Well, I mean, we could even, I mean, they already know. They got, they went to get, they got CP CPA money to do this, right?
Good, good. And then I would also suggest, uh, just, I mean, Wendy's right here, but just in the interest of the town working together, that, that it, when that memo goes out, that we copy the select board.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, town, town manager, certainly. I mean, you know.
Select board, they're.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I would include town manager in the distribution.
Specifically because, yeah, it was something that he championed as well.
Championed it, yeah.
That's true. Okay. Well, Chris and I will work on this.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, I was, you know, it's great to have all that information in one place. And I stand by the fact that the overall picture at those properties should be part of the comprehensive plan. That'll be a separate matter. Sorry.
Maybe we can make some progress in, in between two years.
Yes, it's true. Cause that's going to be slow. Okay.
No, I, I think the, the uh, comprehensive plan is where most of these things are going to end up sorting out. We're just.
Oh, yes, yes. I'm just saying results will.
I don't know what you're sorry about. Sorry about what?
That I upset you.
Oh, no. I, I was upset because I thought we weren't going to do a memo.
Well, we'll, we'll work this out. Chris, this is the pro. We have the pros here, so we're, we're good.
You know, Madam Chair, um, in all the master plans that I've done, at times we have taken interim parts from it and uh, use that to fulfill a priority. So there's no reason you can't take things that you, that the Matt comprehensive plan over two years is generating and then make them action items and implement.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of stuff that's already.
I'm hoping so. Yeah. I'm hoping there'll be a huge crossover between aspirations like the Nancy Powell stuff and action plans and something will really get done that, you know, gets stuff finished. So, yeah. Okay, we'll work on that memo this week, Chris. We'll see. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
All right. Zoning workshop, reduce frontage. Okay, this is another one where there is absolutely reams of material. A bunch of the information that was sent was actually about frontage, like regular old frontage. I don't even want to look at the documents.
I apologize. I flooded you, but I just.
Absorb anymore. We were, the zone, considered the zone flooded. Yes.
Could I say something on this?
Yeah, we're going to talk about it.
Right, but I mean, to, to, to start, so Chris has mentioned, and we've all mentioned the importance of the master plan. When we did the last one, we had a build out and why I've heard about visioning, which is great. Visioning is really, really important. But I also would like to, to stress that one part, one great success from the prior master comprehensive plan was to do a build out and then react to the build out analysis as to what you then want to have for changes to your zoning. So the, the only reason I mention it is I, Chris, I, I if you could bookmark uh, build out and find out when we're going to take up build out, which can be its own separate uh,
Thank you for mentioning that, Rob.
Yeah, but let me just finish one, one thing, just because my belief is we shouldn't be taking this reduced frontage up until we've gone through.
Exactly.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Chris, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm trying to incorporate a build out analysis as an existing conditions section that will inform the visioning process. We have forty-five thousand. I think I can do it. So uh, thank you for that input.
Right, just because like, think back all the conversations we've been having with people about like Middle Street, so Zero Middle Street. What, what was the concern there? Well, how, how big are we going to build out? I know it goes to a specific site, but when you do the build out, you then start seeing what you're going to do no matter what, uh, you know, the, the formas and whatnot. What you're going to do if you, if you remain in a certain zoning and it might lead to suggestions that people buy into about, we've got to allow for some build out, but we want to control it in a certain fashion. So most of the conversations, you go back to Sarkis and, and the nap property, that was all about how are we building out this town? And, and, and that, that will come out of the comprehensive pan- plan and it will come out of uh, the build out analysis, I think.
No, I agree. I think, you know, zoning is the last, the language of zoning is really the last part. You have to begin with the end in mind. So what is your goal? What is it you're trying to achieve? And then what's the best way to get there? So we all know that in whatever our particular expertise is or our families or our, whatever we do, our hobbies. So, yeah, we need to, we need to figure out what it is we want to do. And then you write zoning to support that.
Yes, thank you. Well said.
We'll be working on that. So I don't think we need to look at any of that specific language now. It's good that we have it. And when the time comes, we'll dig into it. What's next? General business. I think we didn't have any minutes this time. We'll have to get those working.
I'll work on that, Madam Chair.
Talk to Jen about that or however you, the two of you are managing minutes these days. This transition is tricky because, you know, while we were without a, a town planner for some of June, all of July and most of August, uh, Jen took on a lot of various duties. Meanwhile, she's trying to do that for the Conservation Commission, which is without a, a person in the office, at least as far as I know yet. So she's been doing a lot of different things and now we're recalibrating to make sure that everybody knows what everybody's supposed to do and that the right person is doing the right thing and all that stuff. So you know, work in progress, but we'll get there. Uh, reports and updates, MVPC, are they geared up yet, Brian?
We have a meeting on Thursday.
Great. Affordable Housing Trust, Deb is away. I don't know that they've met. We could ask Wendy if there's anything, but I don't know. There is. Affordable Housing Trust?
No, there's nothing new. We did meet last week, but it was just catching up on the small grant program.
Okay, thank you. And CPC, same thing, Ray. Have you met at all? Probably not.
Uh, no.
Okay. Uh, the other report though is the planners report. I, as I said, I think most of what was in the report, we've touched on, but were there other things, Chris, that you want to mention?
One thing I want to, uh, before we forget about it, uh, to mention to the board is activity on the nap property. Uh, we got a, a correspondence from the building inspector, the developer, Mr. Sarkis, their prospective developer. He's begun to remove asbestos. So I just want to make the, the board, in case you get any inquiries, aware of uh, that activity. It's pre-demolition and uh, obviously they'll need bu- building permits for demolition. So there's a whole process with that, but they are informing us of what they're doing out there right now. So if people see people out there and activity, that's all it is, is removing asbestos.
Right, but it also probably indicates that the uh, uh, property's been purchased by Sarkis.
It has, yes.
Yeah, right. So that's, that's going to be the, the, the first thing that people are going to want to know that, that he's, he's now got, he's now on the clock.
Well.
Brian?
It, yeah, there's been nothing in, recorded in sale of deeds to date.
Yes, there, no, there was something I saw in early July.
No, no, the, Anne, that was not.
Oh, that was something different?
Something totally different, a hundred percent different. Yeah, Bri- Brian, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely find out for you on that, but uh, but my guess is that he's not doing expenses unless it controls the property, so.
Well, at some point he has, you know, what he needs to, to pull the permits that he needed for that is control of the site and that's a little bit different, but yeah.
No, yeah, but he's not going to do expenditures, uh, is my point.
Yeah, he, he's spending real money on civil engineering.
He's spending real money on this. This is a quarter million dollar uh, job that he's.
I'm sure the abatement is, is unbelievable. Yeah. Okay, well, that's what the action is out there. That's good to know.
It is what it is.
Chris, anything else from your?
That's it for now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any exciting correspondence or dull correspondence? I think administrative details, again, we've been grabbing as we go along, but is there anything on your radar, Chris?
Nope.
Okay, now we get to these fun Major Boyd things. This is, you know, it's been so long. We've had so many common driveways and private ways that my road acceptance brain is somewhere stored in a very deep locker somewhere. So um, I've had to ask Chris to, to refresh our memory. And there was a memo that was written too, describing the process. But for the purposes of this board, what do we need to do and when do we need to do it?
Yeah, so uh, you approved this definitive subdivision, uh, many moons ago. And now it is complete. And so as part of the closeout process for that, uh, the developer needs to come to the town and ask for a certificate of completion. That's one of the forms that's in your subdivision regs. And so it's an administrative process that I usually handle. It involves getting the signatures of water, uh, the DPW, um, health and, and other folks to, um, on a certificate to say we've inspected it and it's complete according to what you approved. And so uh, I have that certificate. And you can act on that at any time. And that's a precursor to uh, moving to the process before town meeting, which is street acceptance. And he has applied for that as well, the, the developer, Mr. Cook. So um, the, the selectmen have looked at that and um, town council's reviewing some of the documents, but the selectmen have referred it to you. And you're only asked in terms of that, the street acceptance before town meeting is a report. Doesn't need to be a public hearing unlike zoning. So um, you can take your time and we can take it up at a, at a meeting to be determined, but um, it would be a report about whether or not you recommend the town meeting accepts it as, as a public street.
May I ask, do, do we have ASBILs?
We have all the proper documentation that the process is, is outlined in the memo. We've got the ASBIL, the street acceptance plan, the deeds. Um, and those, some of those documents are being reviewed, but so everything is um, been properly submitted to be placed on the warrant for street acceptance in town meeting. So that's where we are. Your ask at this time is this um, certificate of completion because why would you report and recommend anything unless you knew the project was complete? So uh, that, that's for you, that's something you don't have to do tonight. You can await further information, but essentially, uh, you know, once the final bond is released, which hasn't happened, that does require a public hearing, then uh, you know, you can take your time reporting to town meeting. It's okay for you to accept this.
Conceptually, yes, but, but as for dates and stuff like that. So at this point, the certificate of completion is fully executed. Everyone has signed off.
Yes, and the only thing missing on that technically is the release of the final bond. So we can talk about scheduling that. It does require a public hearing.
Okay. And then the other thing is for street acceptance, Brian asked, we received ASBILs, but have they been reviewed by Meridian?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, everybody has signed off on that. That's what this certificate of completion.
Okay.
Um, certifies. And so, yes, you, you know that the project has been completed according to the way you approved it.
Okay.
Everybody signed off. The final release of the bond is a formality. It just requires a public hearing, but this tells you the project's done.
Okay, so what I'm wondering, given that there's a lot that's going to be going on and it's three weeks till our next meeting, which will be a very busy one. Shall, is it, um, does it make sense for us to just go ahead and to vote on this, these two things now, move to, you know, accept the approve the certificate and move to recommend the road? Can we do that tonight?
I would because why not? You have everything you need to, to protect and ensure that the town's gotten the the project the way you approved it. So, yeah, motion to, um, if, if the, it pleases the board, motion to approve the certificate of completion pending the final bond release. You can do it that way. And then motion to report favorably to town meeting for the street acceptance before them.
And then the bond release we could do, say on October twenty-first or?
Exactly.
Cause it would be good to get it all wrapped up.
How much do we have? Do you have the number there, Chris?
What are we holding still?
I, I don't know that. Um, it's not a lot.
Just curious.
And, yeah, I think it's about twenty-one, but I don't, I don't know. I'd have to check that, but not a lot.
And won't we get a final bill from Meridian for this most recent review too? We have to call in all those bills and get those paid before we release it.
Correct, yeah.
So we do need to let a little.
The final accounting, we need a little time to administratively put that together.
Okay. Well, I just happen to have here some motion language provided me by the town planner.
There you go.
So my first motion to approve the certificate of completion for the Major Boyd definitive subdivision pending the final bond release. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Ann Bardine, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Rob Phillips, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes four to zero. And a second motion, I move that the uh, planning board favorably recommend to town meeting the street acceptance for the Major Boyd definitive subdivision. Right, duly moved and seconded. Any more?
I just point out that uh, throughout this whole process, going back a couple of years now, it was always understood that, that we would be recommending that this go to the town as a public street.
Absolutely.
In the town's best interest and in the interest of our future neighbors.
Yes, yeah, this was never a surprise from, from the, the very first. I think the early application, it was anticipated to be a public way.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that for the future minutes about this meeting.
Thank you. Yes, it was always, the project proceeded with the understanding that this would be a public way. And certainly the people who bought property there, um, assumed that would be the case. So that's great. All right, so uh, having a motion on the floor, all in favor? Ann Bardine, aye.
Ray Cook, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Rob Phillips, aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Thank you very much. And let's try if we can to get the final accounting in and schedule the hearing for the twenty-first, if that works for Mr. Crowe. If he's willing to wait till our first November meeting, we can do that too.
Yeah, thank you for taking the town planner's language up. Don't take any fashion or culinary advice from that guy.
Okay.
Now.
That's free advice.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, our, our November meeting though is after town meeting, so that would mean could we release the bond after we?
Yes.
Yeah, I think the bond is another matter. That provides an opportunity for anyone in the public who might have a.
Doesn't weigh on the, the vote to accept as a town way.
I don't think so. Give, having, having the certificate of completion, the town has been satisfied that everything is fine. If people come out of the woodwork, we'll deal with them in the, you know, the bond hearing. But those wouldn't be members of the, the town staff. Town staff and boards. All right, great. Nice to get those things moved along. So, Chris, then you will advise the select board that that vote was made.
Yes.
Never form is required. Great, okay. Gee, last thing is the placement of items for future agendas. Oh, and we have this, yeah, the whole uh, comprehensive plan visioning scope. And you gave us some examples. Again, zones.
Yeah, actually, um, the, the. Katrina, yeah, actually, um, the, the prior town planner put these together. You know, they're the only ones that, um, that I, there were others, but this, these ones seem relevant. I added Pepperell because planners talk about what a success that was, the emphasis on a visioning process. But, um, we're starting to put the scope of work together for the visioning, so uh, comments, questions, thoughts, concerns, and, um, you know, that, as I begin to scope that out, obviously the draft of the scope of work will come to you first, you know, as we move towards getting a consultant for the visioning. So that's where we are.
Well, as you mentioned and as Rob underlined, there's some data collection and, you know, sort of hard numbers to inform the visioning. It's great to say we ought to have a Ferris wheel on the town green or whatever, but again, without some data to back it up. So how, what's the, how does that work?
You know, if you look at Yarmouth, uh, you know, they have a, a good sort of, um, timeline or schedule here. And I think we did move with something similar. We want to be aggressive, so we want a consultant on the contract first of the year. And I think we can do that as long as the, the board accepts the scope of work. And, um, you know, I guess it's time, obviously, to advertise it and then have a selection process. So the visioning itself, forty-five grand, I think the consultant would probably put together i- in the budget and the timeline they'd give us, um, four to six months. And so I think that's what we're tentatively looking at right here. And then we'll move, you know, during that time to try and get grant money for the rest of the comprehensive plan, which will be another year and a half. But, uh, we have the money, as, as we said, uh, it was appropriated by town meeting for the visioning. So we have all the tools we need to get started and, and then some. And th- that should include the build out analysis as well, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well done, Chris.
Yeah, thoughts, comments?
Nicely done.
Yeah, this is great. Again, having something concrete to begin to, to, uh, you know, react to and, uh, respond to and edit is terrific, so.
So looking for a draft scope of work fairly complete by October twenty-first.
Wow, okay, great.
Wow.
We love it. All right, so that dovetails with our, uh, placing items, but, um, what about this update of procedures? What's that all?
Right.
So, uh, this is, um, a document that, that sort of guides you in terms of your procedures and, and authority. It hasn't been updated since, um, twenty nineteen. I did include it in the packet for you, did I not? Should, a copy of it should be in there. But in any case, I'll make sure it's in the screen packet. Yeah, so, um.
But this is comprehensive plan stuff.
Yeah, it, it's time to update this. So usually you want to do it every five years and so, um, you know, I, I'm hearing or there's talk of having town council out to do sort of a review of the legal landscape and land use. And, um, you know, that, from there, that would be a good segue into updating our standard operating procedures for the planning board, for your permitting and authority.
Right, but I'm not seeing a document to look at.
No, no, we don't have.
I'll make sure it's in the next packet, but this isn't mission critical right now. Something we have to do.
Right.
Uh, but the statute obviously authorizes you to have standard operating procedures in terms of how you conduct your business. And in looking at it, it needs to be updated a little bit.
Good, good.
Okay.
So that will be an item on the agenda.
What we've got on screen right now is something from Williamsburg Vision.
Yeah, that's more visioning.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, we're not looking at what Chris is talking about.
No, we're not. We don't, we're not looking at that, but we'll have that to look at in the future, so.
Right, right.
Yeah, you know, we, we were emphasizing certain things, which we've now realized are really huge. And so we're having to meter them out over the next number of meetings to get, you know, to put the proper focus on MBTA and they get to other things, so. So I would say for scheduling, we've got October seventh is MBTA, and I'm, I don't know what else we'd want to list there, but if anything comes along, we'll deal with it when it comes along. Um, and then for the twenty-first, we'll see if we can have the public hearing to release the bond for Major Boyd. We'll look at a draft scope for this visioning process. And maybe the standard operating procedure document, or do you want to wait until after this lawyer, this legal counsel thing?
Dare to dream, but, um, yeah, I'll probably have some draft recommendations.
Okay.
And there's no reason that has to wait for the town councils.
Oh, it doesn't, okay.
To have an R, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I, I'd love to see that. I frankly don't remember it, but if we updated it, we mu- we must have seen it before. Anybody else recollect this thing?
It, it doesn't ring a bell, but I'm, I'm sure we did.
Yeah.
That was Leah, so.
Yeah, yeah, that was a while.
It's not an exciting process, but it is a necessary one.
Right, right.
It's kind of like, you know, going to get your teeth cleaned.
Little, you know, board education never hurts, right? Um, all right, that sounds good. Um, yeah, the legal landscape land use thing, I'm not quite sure what that is. Do we want to just pursue that later to get, you tell me what that means?
Yeah, we need more information on that, but, um, generally speaking, it's, it's kind of a periodic uh, forum or, or discussion where, um, it's training. Training for boards committees and commissions talk about, and there have been many, obviously, um, updates to the statute and, um, legal case law related to land use and so forth, so that's a good primer, just to get up to speed on everything that's been thrown at us the last couple of years, particularly from the state.
Okay.
You, you know what it is, but, um, it's good to hear kind of what the legal.
Is that a, a good place for us to also raise our own questions, like Ray was, uh, earlier about, you know, what, what's the basis for eligibility for fifty percent voting? Is that?
That would be the perfect place to.
Right, so, so we can, we can, it, it, we, we used to do this on the FinCom with, with the select board and town manager, uh, and town moderator where, you know, you periodically you get together and, and even though stuff may have been in place, uh, it may have reared its ugly head for the first time, or it might have suddenly become an issue. And it was a, is, is a good time for all of us to kind of get, um, have a good collaborative discussion, including town council and, and a lot of times sort out, you know, what the best path was or what the correct thing to do was, which you always want to be doing, obviously.
Interesting. It seems like it could be quite a lot of people if we had staff.
I don't know how they're going to, yeah, that, that part of it, I can't, yeah, that part.
That's to be determined.
Finding a time when people could attend would be tricky. It seems to me that when I joined the board, and this is a long time ago, there used to be these citizen planner training collaborative courses, and they were in-person classes, and you'd have to wait till there was one that was not too far from you and go to Northern Essex and go to wherever it was.
Go to Amherst, you had to go to Amherst.
Right, and we would learn about.
Now that I'm sure they're online.
No, they, they still have those, uh, citizen planner.
They do.
Really the young, you know, a new member thing.
Right, but, but I don't know if, like, as we get new members, I can't recall whether the last little while we advised some of these younger folks to do that or not.
You, you can get, you can request in-house training.
Yes.
From them. So we, I can look into that. I, I can give you like a menu.
Right.
All a card thing, and you can, if anything interests you, I'll put in a request in.
Thank you.
The state actually.
I was just saying that, that, uh, I've been an idiot enough to know that e- even though I've been on the board a long time, and sure, this would be good for somebody who's new to the board, but I'm sure there's stuff that we, we could learn from.
Hundred percent.
You're absolutely right. Some of it becomes kind of oral tradition and we've veered off the straight and narrow and we don't even realize it. We've been veering together, so.
That's kind of, that's kind of the theme of my life, sort of veering off the.
Yeah.
Well, you, you know, you have the state passing all this, uh, you know, landmark, land use law.
Right, but it's even some, even some of the old stuff, uh, Chris.
Yeah.
It, it, it comes up and then all of a sudden it's like, you know, it's been there for thirty years and suddenly someone realizes, oh, you know what this really means? No, really.
That whole thing about, you know, that we ran into about access and wetlands along the edge of the road and that kind of stuff. I mean, that was,
Yeah.
You know, we thought we were doing everything by the book at the time and it turned into a big thing.
Yep.
Well, a big thing for a while was cannabis. And, um, you know, the state passes laws and they leave them kind of general and vague, and then they leave the, the promulgation of, uh, you know, the regulations and so forth to these state agencies. So it's this moving, evolving target.
Right, and then it gets into the court system.
As I was just going to say, they leave it to the court system to resolve the ambiguities.
Yes, and of course, the most recent example of that is the MBTA communities.
Right, right.
Oh, is that a thing?
Guidelines? What guidelines? Yeah, it's been all.
It's, it's a thing until the state proposes to eliminate single-family zoning in Massachusetts, which is an actual proposal to the legislature. So just, yeah, hold your breath.
We just did it in California, I think, didn't we? I think California did.
Yeah.
It happens.
Well, you know, the other thing that's, I, be- because of the political situation and all that's going on on a national basis, that could have a huge impact on the demands for housing and everything as well, so these are in certain times.
Mm-hmm. Yes, and it's all connected, isn't it?
It is.
Well, with these philosophical musings in mind, uh, I think we've conducted all the business that we were intending to do tonight. Um, so I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Ray Cook, aye.
Aye.
All right.
Brian Murphy, aye, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris, glad to have you, again, glad to have you with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
We'll follow up. Are you welcome? Chris and I will follow up.
Well done, well done, Ann.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Take care.
All right, good night.